Following the place to the flag, my councilor Ahearn will lead us into that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council members, let's check in. And all our in attendance. We have before us the minutes of the April 5th meeting. If there are any corrections, I would like to make a motion that they be approved and written.
That way...
Motion, do we have a second? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the minutes are up. Phil Hurst. Phil, it's one of those times you go off and look forward to it. You may be looking forward to it because you're going to get on another street called Easy Street this is retirement. And certainly, this is a proud moment for you and we say goodbye to someone who served very well and is, we congratulate him for that. I have something to read here for you. And this says, whereas Detective Phil Hurst began serving as citizens of Morristown as patrol officer with the Morristown Police Department in April of nineteen ninety-two. And whereas Detective Hurst humbly and bravely served his community as field training officer, field training officer coordinator, recruiting coordinator, and detective. And whereas Detective Hurst served on the honor guard, Morristown Counter Alcohol Patrol and Special Response Team. And whereas Detective Hurst grew in his skills during his time with the Morristown Police Department, becoming certified as a defensive tactics VR twenty-four and DUI instructor. And whereas throughout his years with the Morristown Police Department, Detective Hurst was awarded a variety of interdepartmental awards, including Master Officer, worksmanship, safe driving, good conduct, perfect attendance, and was chosen as Detective of the Year ten times. And whereas Detective Hurst retired from the city's employment on April twenty-first of this year, now therefore, I'm Major Gary Chesney, on behalf of the City Council of Morristown, Tennessee, do hereby congratulate and commend Detective Phil Hurst for his thirty years of dedicated service to our wonderful community and wish him health, happiness, and well-being for the future. I think we can all agree that when someone who these kinds of accomplishments retires, that position is not easily filled, certainly a retirement's one where our... And you give an instant.
You give that.
Well, it says citizen on the top of it, but I think there's more to it than that. If it is.
Phil, in acknowledgement of the thirty years of police services to the community, I would like to present to you the weapon and say thank you for your service.
Phil, I think you had a lot of support very dear and that's another testimony for their support. You can hear also actually things like that pause for folks and slide out. They don't have the interest because the rest of us always... We understand that. Well, over the floor at this time for anyone who would like to speak to the council about items that are on the agenda. These comments are about agenda items only, the exception being the public hearing, which will have its own comment section. You'll have three minutes to speak. It's not a question-answer session, but you do have three minutes to address any item that is on the agenda that you wish for the council to clear prior to action to the... At the floor is now... We also ask that you identify yourself, a name, and address.
My name is Linda Knowley, Jefferson Road. I'd like to address, I think it's nine C seven. I'm not sure if it's Summers Taylor or the contract or the title, we're surfacing the wrong... From what I understand and see on the last page, I simply initial the first page, second page, and the third page, sign it, and it's a contract. While this isn't a question-and-answer page or session, I certainly think this question should be addressed before you sign this. In the general conditions eleven, excuse me, L and M, it mentions the city indemnifying and holding harmless Summers Taylor from various issues at the site. And that's, as I say, in L. It is not in M, it's mentioned twice in L. I've always understood that a city or a government cannot indemnify a private individual or a firm in such a way. And so I think that needs to be addressed before you approve this. If there's some exception, fine, I'd like to know. I just looked at it a while ago and saw that, and I hope you'll address that before you approve it. Thank you.
Anyone else? On any other topic or that one?
Which one was that? Mayor, was it none?
This is the Summers and Taylor pay the pass around the block of the park. Is that who you're addressing?
Number seven.
Anyone else? Seeing no one come forward, I will close this portion of the agenda. And we go to the public hearing that we have today. This is coming back to the agenda. It was on the floor and the other request is that it be pulled and now the issues that were in hand have been resolved. This is ordinance four six nine seven entitled, "Order to amend the municipal code of the city of Morristown, Appendix B," which is the resulting of Hamblen County Tax Parcel ID number you see before you, from intermediate business and Hamblen County Tax Parcel ID that's also there that you see before you, from R two, medium-density residential district to RP one, a planned development residential district. The general location, which is shown on the attached exhibit A and is displayed on the screen above. And this being off just on Highway twenty-five B. And Josh?
Yes, sir. So this is a request. There's zones, two parcels off Highway twenty-five B to RP one, which is our planned residential district. The total size of this request is slightly under twenty-two acres, and both properties are currently vacant. It has Highway twenty-five E to the east, Campbell Acres subdivision to the west, and Beckett property to the south. The preliminary site plan that planning commission approved with this request includes fifty-three single-family residential lots and eighty-four townhomes. The applicant is proposing to place these single-family lots up against the existing single-family neighborhood, that is to the east. That acts as a buffer against the higher-density townhouses. The plan does provide two access points, with one being from Highway twenty-five E, and the other is a stub, a right way off of Keystone Drive, that is Keystone Drive substance of this property. Based on the proposed site layout, staff believes the applicant providing similar residential development along the existing established neighborhood to the east and their transition to the townhouses along Highway twenty-five E provides a higher density next to a major corridor within the city. Staff recommends approval, and planning commission did vote in their October meeting for the in-fair request also.
We'll continue with this public hearing. I hope we can forward to anyone who wishes to address this item. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close the public hearing, and I would like to take a motion that this be adopted. Do we have a motion? So, motion Ahearn, do we have a second? Or we have a second. Are there any questions or concerns by the council?
Would you explain the stub again?
I apologize. Keystone Drive, which is in that neighborhood to the east, is stubs into this property, which will provide a secondary access point to this property. So you have access off twenty-five E to the major corridor and then access into an established single-family neighborhood.
So that is, the stub Keystone is going into an established residential area, R one?
Yes.
And do we need to let them know that this road is going to be open?
This was addressed during the planning commission meeting.
Okay. Did you have any concerns raised by anyone in that neighborhood?
There was, there always is, there's concerns when you're developing a vacant piece of property into a residential neighborhood. But these lots are similar in size to those existing there, similar to our medium-density residential lots. And kind of transitioning from, you know, single-family to twenty-five E, we do have, or single, well, so you got the single-family, and then we transition to the higher-density residential along twenty-five E.
Okay, and I'm going to ask, there is an exit here on the lower end of the, onto twenty-five. Is that correct? So that's one, and the other one is through on Keystone?
Yes, ma'am.
Up the back. So are most of the condos then being able to come out on twenty-five? Is what you're telling me?
I would imagine that would be their choice. You have full access there. You can go toward, back toward town or toward the lake, and it's already open.
Then how far do I have to go on Keystone to connect to the next major road that's going to bring me back to town, or east or west, or north or south?
Keystone...
Keystone comes out on Liberty Hill Road, and then you go northward. I think what the folks who, as I recall, the ones who came to the planning commission, realized that they were going to have a nice shortcut out of their subdivision on twenty-five E. And that, as opposed to folks who are close, that close to twenty-five E, decided to take Keystone off Liberty Hill, onto North Liberty Hill, on twenty-five E. I think that's actually the advantage, just with the folks who live on Keystone instead of the other lots worth.
That's why I was asking, I would, if I was coming back, you can develop our one road, I would come out on twenty-five instead of wandering around.
Yeah, it's kind of secure as a trap to get back into town if you come out that way.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Are we ready to vote? Let's vote. Confused about colors. Passes. We have, for the council, we have six ordinances on first reading, the first of which is ordinance four seven oh five. This is entitled, "An ordinance to annex certain territory and to incorporate same within the corporate boundaries of the city of Morristown as the annexation of property currently addressed as one thirty-eight West Manly Court Circle." And it has the Hamblen County Tax ID number that you see, but it has a zoning designation of intermediate business ID. The general location being shown is on the attachment of exhibit A, which will be flashed up here. I'm certain.
Yes, so, the property owners of one thirty-eight West Manly Court Circle has requested annexation into the city limits. The reason given for this request is to obtain city services, as the owner stated that this will be part of the Bellwood Farms commercial development. The subject parcel does need condition to be annexed. It is located within the Morristown urban growth boundary, and it is contiguous with the city limits. You know, as you tell there, that kind of dark line is the city limits, so it does have property to the north and west in the city, along, well, probably east also across the street. This parcel is one quarter of an acre in size, and it does currently contain a dilapidated residential unit that will need to be removed as part of this development. If annexed, staff does recommend this parcel be zoned intermediate business due to the proposed commercial uses associated with Bellwood Farms. Staff recommends approval of this request with the IB designation, and planning commission did vote in support of this request last week.
Is there a motion to accept this regulation, or is there any support? Vote Smith. You have a second. You need a second. Got a second. Any questions or comments for the council?
So this is the vast portion of that lot. It's not the portion that's close to West AJ?
Yeah, the portion close to West AJ, I believe, T-Mobile or something like that. And that's within the city. This is the house that's very visible from AJ, just to the south of it.
This structure generates a lot of complaints about why don't we do something about it and answer why this is not good. Are we ready to vote? Let's vote. The passes on first reading and is set for a public hearing on May third. Next ordinance four seven zero six, entitled, "Order to amend the municipal code of the city of Morristown." Appendix B results three point nine seven eight acres of the Hamblen County Tax Parcel ID that you see printed before you, front intermediate business to heavy industrial district. The general location is being shown on the attached exhibit A, Superior Drive.
Yes, sir. So as you just stated, staff has received a request to rezone approximately four acres slightly under of property that front Superior Drive from IB to HI. The request, a piece of property, is currently vacant. And due to this location of property and the property joining the Morristown Airport industrial park, the applicant has stated that they will want to utilize this property, if possible, to help serve the industrial tenants of the park, such as large warehouse units. Nearby uses include vacant land to the north and West Endland Hydrapark and South Southern North along AJ, West Andrew Johnson. Both of those being zoned intermediate business. There's a house to the east zoned intermediate business and Interplast to the west zoned HI. Since this property being requested to be zoning is adjacent to an established industrial park that's zoned HI and hurts the roads in the park, staff will leave rezoning this property to HI as assistant with nearby zoning and uses. Planning commission voted in support of this request, and the industrial development board similarly in the city also support this request.
Is there a motion from the council to accept this ordinance on first reading?
Submit.
Motion, Senator. We have a second. We do have a second. Any questions from the council?
Yes, I did want to ask, the one's in yellow up there, that is residential, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is that considered the Dunlop Hall?
Oh, no, that's a, you know, there's several lots within that. It's an established single-family residential. And Dunlop, I'm, I'm misunderstanding, we're typically talking about an area that's not within the city, but that's within the city and it's zoned residential. It's not just, it's not spot zoning, I mean, that's existing from projects ago, but it's, you know, several residential units within that.
Dunlop is probably definitely not the right term, but it just seems like, very seldom have we isolated a residential area with these two zonings.
That's predates me, so I'm not sure what the... I'm guessing that neighborhood is probably developed prior to the industrial park there.
That's correct.
Does it have a name? Does it have a name?
I think Smoke Ridge is one of the roads. I'm not sure what the actual...
If you come out, you know, where your old airport road there, out, like you just go straight across. Right behind that big landslide.
Yeah, I've always heard of the place in Smoke Ridge.
Smoke Ridge.
Thank you.
I know, when we see industrial park, you know, any redevelopment or spending, we're always talking of that residential neighborhood, make sure we, make sure the developer provides, add a foot buffer to those, you know, those that would there, you know.
Are there other questions by the council? I would just like to underscore what Josh said. This issue was reviewed and debated by the industrial development board. They did vote to endorse the rezoning, because they are very interested in having some additional warehouses for the industrial park, so they support the motion. We're ready to vote. Let's vote. Motion carries, set for a public hearing on May third. Next is ordinance four seven oh seven, entitled, "Order to amend the municipal code of the city of Morristown, Appendix B," results Hamblen County Tax Parcel ID, the numbers that are listed before you. This is the Millstone Golf Club, from A one agriculture to R three P, high-density residential. The general location is shown on the exhibit of, as we said, formerly known as the Millstone Golf Course.
Yes, sir. The Millstone Golf Club located at the end of Alpha Valley Home Road and requesting a five-year zone from the current designation of A one or agriculture to R three, which is high-density residential. The golf course has subpar memberships since the break of session two thousand and eight, and have since that time wished to develop their land into some type of useful development. Four acre, one hundred, or the full parcel, one hundred and fifty acre property is founded by the Northern Southern Railroad, the airport, and Colgate Plant along the north. To the sound is that it's the Performance Booth Room, hallway one sixty, all of which are zoned for industrial use. To the east between Veterans Parkway and Alpha Valley Road, Alpha Valley Home Road, excuse me, is mixture of both large acre tracks that are vacant and second round. And they will remain as agricultural and zone. Staff is comfortable with a smaller locker zone predominantly because of what currently exists around such a property, as I said, all that is intensive, heavy industrial use. Any traffic generated from the proposed residential belt will be mitigated by a minimum of two access points. In addition, a traffic study and required was plans, construction plans, show the construction of more than one hundred homes. The planning commission voted to accept this request on and the city council for approval with their April twelve meeting. On the other hand, this is a question.
Is there a motion to accept that regulation, the rezon? So, motion Smith, is there a second? And we have a second. Any questions or comments from the council?
Where are the access points coming from?
The first access point will be from Alpha Valley Home Road. And we've only got a concept plan on this thus far. And the other access road, I'll show you, I'll read it for you. The other access road, they show coming off Powell Road. And then goes up to here and then straight out to Veterans Parkway. And again, that's, that's what they've shown us for on the, on the concept one.
One more question. If they show you that on the concept plan and we vote on it with one hundred percent agreement, do they have the ability to change that and bring that back to planning, and that's never anything about their change?
Well, right now, we're only voting on zoning the property. But the subdivision plate will have to go to the planning commission. Once the zoning is voted on, it will not have to come back to city council. So that, I mean, there is a chance they could change it, but they are very limited as to the areas they can plan this road. So to change those points, would they, would they have to redesign a good portion of the concept plan?
I totally agree with Chris. We've had situations in the past where they require two, this board has, or two, in bris, in bris, and all that stuff. And then when it left us, when they came back, the planning and the planning commission decided it didn't need to happen again. But it doesn't, so it doesn't come back then.
No, sir, it won't.
So we're not really passing this that it has two entrances.
No.
We're just passing this that it's going to be a subdivision.
Rezoned to allow residential development, yes, sir.
That's all we're, that's the thing the council needs to understand there.
Yes, sir. That's, that's all that's in front of it.
They're not saying they have to do this. They're just saying, we're, we're just saying we're letting it make the residential.
I think this development is approximately four hundred and fifty yards, is that correct?
It's four hundred, four hundred and fifty.
That's right. Well, I think when you develop something of that size, that makes today a warrant file before you do a concept plan.
Yes, sir.
And I don't think that makes to have the ability to change a whole lot. And this body not have a chance to see it.
Well, if it gives you any more faith than, than what I've just told you, that they, they were required by fire codes to have two entrances after they hit a hundred units. They have to have two entrances. There's no if, ands, or buts about that. Where they're going to be, we can't pinpoint that right now. We just tell you what we've been given.
So I think it's worth pointing out that, that if something is approved by council that goes to planning commission, that, that whatever planning commission approves is not something that they just pulled out of the air or written up themselves. Subdivision developers have to meet a standard, they have to meet a requirement, they have to meet zoning regulations, all of them have to be decided by ordinance from our council. So it's not like somebody can throw the council curve.
I don't think that the ordinance that the council can direct which way a road goes down. That's the issue with giving that wire.
Lauren, this, this project, it will come to have a proof of construction at some point, is that correct?
Yes, sir. It will, it will go before, for preliminary plan approval before the planning commission.
The planning commission approves the construction?
Yes.
I guess my, you know, it's going to do what it's going to do, and I'm going to vote for it. But property at that place, on that end of town, that post-industrial park with access to the railroad, number one, does not make it a residential, it's industrial. And I think this body had a chance to buy that, and I think we made a mistake in not doing that.
Well, the owner bought it considerably less than what they were selling to the city for. That's the reason we buy it. Because it's worth a whole lot more money than what they sold us over.
I think we didn't pursue it to the level that we should have, as a group. And I'm not saying the same to anybody in just saying that. That property that close to the airport industrial park, it's a hundred and fifty acres. You, you can't replace that property. Like we just rezoned what, four acres, wasn't counting on the one prior to this. I've suffered, I mean, four acres in industrial wood lives, it's not a hundred and fifty, and we didn't get serious about it. But I've said all, I'm going to start this right on.
I have one more question. It has to pass a fire safety codes.
Yes, ma'am.
Which is over a hundred. We're approving a lot of R threes, which are smaller lots, but that does not change the, any of the guidelines with the width of the streets.
Yes.
Okay. So we have plenty of room to turn our fire trucks around and anything like that. Do we have, and the cul-de-sacs, I know there's been a question about that.
The subdivision regulations pretty much mirror image the fire regulations that members serves, and the radius of the cul-de-sacs will accommodate emergency access points. And the fire marshal reviews plans with us.
And another thing that came to mind was, with this density, do we have to have more fire hydrants? Is there a, for more five hydrants?
I think hydrants are five...
Every five hundred feet of residential.
So it doesn't matter?
Regardless of... Yes, ma'am. Any other questions? Are we ready to vote? Let's vote. And a motion carries. This ordinance likewise is set for a public hearing on the third. Next ordinance four seven oh eight, entitled, "Order to amend the municipal code of the city of Morristown, rezoning of Hamblen County Tax Parcel ID, numbers you see before you, which is at two thirty-one South Fairmont." This change goes from light industrial to intermediate business. The general location is shown, and it's actually a specific location.
Yes, sir. This request comes from Mark Davenport for his property at two thirty-one South Carolina Avenue. He is asking that be rezoned from the current designation of light industrial to intermediate business. The half-acre property sits on the outskirts of Raytown. Residential community started in the early nineteen sixties and is located just east of Yandale, I Care, and the Cellar Liquor Store, all of which are zoned commercial. Just north, fronting West Morse Boulevard, is a, is a former trucking company and dairy business. Just north, fronting West Morris Boulevard is a is a former trucking company and dairy business. Both are still zone for manufacturing. The site, which was once home to horse and gas, has over time transcended uh to commercial business, in this case, a medical office. This section of West Morris has been in transition these past few years with more commercial retail taking over the older um industrial warehouse sites. Therefore, Stack is in favor of this request, as was the planning commission at their April twelfth meeting, where they voted to send request on to council for approval.
Is there a motion to accept this recommendation on the first reading? Motion, Ben. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Any questions or comments?
I'm assuming the other council will have it.
I think this.
It's the other one.
Consolidated period.
This is one of the ones I've had.
I'll say yes, it's the next one.
But if you said this one, it's not four four dollars.
The next one is the trucking. I think this one's.
One of the last consolidating.
It's ea- it's easy to give these these slides and stuff because they both are zones, a joint and a joint. But yes, it's it's the next slide, but this is.
This is the one that does pair with Hope's.
That's the side.
That's the horse and gas, really.
Yeah.
It's not that.
This is the one we're talking about.
That's who we're talking about. It's next step around the picture.
Yeah, that's the round picture, because that's just the old base.
Any other questions? Ready to vote? Let's vote.
Okay. Go ahead.
There we go. And that motion carries. Next is the ordinance forty seven oh nine. Forty seven oh eight will be a public hearing as well. Forty seven oh nine, titled ordinance to amend municipal code, the city of Morristown, rezoning of Havel County, Tennessee tax parcel located at twelve twenty-five West Morris Boulevard, the light industrial to intermediate business. And the uh location is the one you see before.
Yes, sir. This this slide is the goal of this item. Uh, this request is as well from Matt Mark Davenport, um who is acting as agent for property owner, Wayne McMoore. Uh, property is at at the intersection of West Morris and South Carolina Avenue. Still zone light industrial. The owner and his agent are asking to rezone two acre property to intermediate business. They are planning to renovate the former trucking terminal, terminal sale. Commercial uses exist to the east and west with medical offices, convenience store, antique store, and women's boutique, all clearly commercial in nature, not industrial. Uh, the coke plant, however, is located just north of this site. As just mentioned, Morris Boulevard is now seen by most as a commercial corridor with manufacturing for the most part contained along the railroad. The planning commission voted for rezoning request to city council for approval.
Is there motion to accept this ordinance on the first reading? Motion, A. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Questions or comments?
Just for just for information, this would be considered a down sum, is that correct, for light industrial and intermediate business? Which is not something we'd do very often, but it is requested.
Yes. Yet in this this instance, it makes no sense since.
So I own the previous one.
I think Mr. Davenport owns the previous one. I'm gonna let you see, he intended to buy this one as well.
So you're not.
But I thi- I think he's intent to buy this one.
He comes on.
Are we ready to vote?
Then he comes on, then he he owns this well.
Let's vote. And that motion carries. Name is also set for a public hearing on day of the third. Finally, we have ordinance four seven ten, this being an ordinance of the city council of Morristown, amended title fourteen, the zoning and land use control of Morristown Municipal Code, chapter two, section fourteen, two thousand and six, pertaining to off-street parking provisions.
As I indicated during our previous session, the main intent of this change is to is to uh address multifamily parking. Right now, we require for apartments, two spaces per unit and often tenants have two or more cars and then if there are visitors, we're set spaces for them. And with the development that's not take place, we wanted to try to increase those numbers. So we're recommending we amend the regulations to require one space for every five parking spaces. Excuse me, thirty-five units, um just to just to provide some additional visitor spaces. And because of that, while we were opening up, we wanted to produce some other changes. I wanted to pull parking out of the general provisions, include in a separate section, so that that it they're easier to find, especially when you have developers in a town looking for the regulations. It'd be easier if we put them in a separate section, which was proposing moving it from chapter two to chapter one, the next slide. Also, under our current regulation, we don't have any provisions for parallel parking. Occasionally, we'll get a request for parallel spaces. So we're recommending to put in uh parallel spaces, these spaces would be nine by twenty-four feet. Typical space is nine by eighteen. This one's giving six extra feet to to move in and out of the the space. Also, as you may recall, we recently had the the commercial district to clean it up where we had the very specific land uses, like commercial law, for architects, engineers, lawyers. We had very specific office type use and and when we bicycle, we we put them in the general categories of uh professional office, general office, medical office, and this just kind of cleans that up. We also uh recently added land use called taprooms and breweries. We have parking standards for them. So we did include a new requirement for them, and that'd be one space per hundred. That's typical with what you see in a restaurant and and you go to one and you see that they're very common, they're very consistent in law. And lastly, uh we're recommending adding the ADA parking requirements into the parking regulations. Two thousand and ten, the American Disability Act was approved, requiring accommodations for handicapped vehicles. And uh we're recommending adding the language pervading out of the American Disability Act. Just a quick overview of what it is, for every twenty-five parking spaces, we require to bu- provide one handicap space. Also, one of every handicap space has to be van accessible. There are also requirements, such as the uh parking stalls next to it, five feet for a typical space, but if you have a handicap space, maybe that striped area, it has to be eight feet. That that's enough room to to get a van accessible of a wheelchair that out so you can unload the vehicle. And then there are also requirements for signage. You're required to have a handicap sign in front of the space. Bottom sign has to be a minimum of five feet from the surface. And we're also required to use symbols that are standardized for the handicapped parking. So we we wanted to incorporate this into the regulations while we had the amendments called. That's kind of a quick overview. You have any questions?
Yes.
Let's get a motion in a second. Is there a motion about this on first reading?
Miss, approval.
Motion center, do we have a second? Need a second. Got a second. Okay.
All right, question. You said you had to have two per, you had to have two parking places.
For a typical resident to use, you require two spaces, whether it's simple family or.
You said you were changing it to one per five or something?
To increase the requirement. So you'll have two for each unit plus one to one additional visitor space for every five units.
One per five units?
Yes, sir.
Correct. That's that's where you lost me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What are you gonna do for your neighbors? You gotta cancel at the same time.
No, we're fine. It's.
The idea is that we live near the park.
Uh, you can require more. Uh, we, I'll have to admit, I took the standards, I I looked at other city codes and incorporated theirs. Kind of, if if there's parking problems, you know, at some point, it's responsibility, the property owner, you know, to provide the space and leave it to the tenants.
Did anybody require two for every five?
I've seen one to ten, I've seen one to five. I I don't recall any more. These are your changes. If you feel they're needed, you can certainly add them.
No, I just, I you lost me on the time when you said one to five.
Followed me talking too fast.
No, I just, I I lost track of the conversation. You clarified it very well, thank you.
Any other comments?
If if we think about this before the next meeting, we can change it, as long as you don't decrease it, you can increase it on the vote. Is that correct?
If you change it, you probably ought to bring it back, but what I recommend is just try it. If you need more spaces, you can always come back at any point when we visit it and change the codes again, kind of do an incremental approach.
That'd be grand, then everybody that's gonna approve it to this point would be grandpa.
Yes.
Are we ready to vote?
I do have one other question. Uh, is is the parallel parking because of the size of vehicles, the increase in the size of vehicles?
Well, if you count, for example, where we had it on street, you need that space to pull up, back in. You you couldn't do that movement in an eighteen foot shop. It just you just need that extra space so that, you know, when there's a car in front of you, you have enough room to get around it.
Well, then I also, you talked about um the taprooms and breweries, one space per one hundred. Uh, is nineteen seventy cents from that?
Well, one, it it would be because they're they're in operation. But also, they're in central businesses, where there are parking.
So the access city parking area, that's correct.
Are we ready to vote? Let's do it. Motion carries and uh will be set at a public hearing on day of the third. Uh, we go through the order of business contracts, first of which is to acknowledge the receipt of proposals for tolling services over gone April fifth of this year and to reject all proposals. We went to the market to see proposals for tolling services to be utilized by the police department. We only received one proposal in response. We think that if we go back out, we can do a better job getting effective responses. That's our recommendation to reject all the issues we have. Is there motion to accept this recommendation? So the motion, Bibbins, we have a second. Any questions or comments? Let's vote. Motion carries. Next is the approval of change order number two point one with path construction for the police impound block in the amount of sixteen thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars in warrants and services.
Council will recall that we're reassembling the building that was formerly used as the wash bay, the public workers on the I Street. This change order addresses the need to replace some of the panels that were damaged by rust in its previous incarnation, as well as some hardware for assembly. We reviewed it, we think it's a reasonable uh judgment to direct that program.
Is there motion to accept this recommendation? Motion, A. Do we have a second? Any questions, comments?
Yes. Tony, you said this was using part of what was at I Street.
Yes, this is the old wash bay at I Street.
Hey, exactly. I have anything to do with the new wash bay at.
No.
Public work.
Public stop. Any other questions? Are we ready to vote? Let's vote. And that motion carries. Next is the approval of purchase order twenty-two double oh twenty-two oh seven to Lamar Dunham Associates Inc., LVA to provide materials testing services for Bryant's Pipe Bridge project in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
We're working to complete the paperwork for the bridge repair. Uh, we're aware that the project is complete in terms of construction with the form of paperwork. Uh, this change order allows to cover some additional costs for materials testing that was done under the engineer's contract. We hope we're ready to close this project out and send it all to the DOJ and to close it down, but we recommend approval.
Is there motion to accept this recommendation? So the motion, Pedego. We have a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, let's vote. And that motion carries. Next is the approval of purchase order twenty-two double oh twenty-two oh eight to Lamar Dunham Associates Inc., LVA to provide general services for stormwater projects in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
This is a standing purchase order we have with the general services for LVA. When we need someone to come and help assess the situation, we'll give a fair amount of help with the game plan. We use this to act LVA company. This is, we've run through that for the current year. We're asking you to replenish that amount. This is valuable uh support of our staff and recommend approval.
Is there motion to accept this recommendation?
Okay.
Motion, Center. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Questions or comments? Hearing none, let's vote. That motion carries. Next is the approval to surplus the service weapon assigned to Detective Phil Hurst, the block model thirty-two, serial number VAXZ eight nine six. We transfer to Detective Hurst in honor of his thirty years of service to the Morristown Police Department. Of course, we've already done this today, so.
And you've left the room, so you all.
He's already out of the room, so the gun's gone. Motion, Center. And we have a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, let's vote. Uh, next is the approval of policy procedure for administrative approval of subleases at the Southeast Industrial LLC hangars in certain scenarios recommended by the Morristown Regional Airport Commission on March sixteenth of this year.
Council had this issue on your last agenda and asked you to put some additional time to consider it. It is an administrative process to approve for uh subleasing of hangars at the airport with a bill for that purpose. The airport commission, as you indicated, does recommend approval of that stuff.
Is there motion to accept this recommendation? So the motion, A. Do we have a second? Need a second. And we have a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, let's vote. And that motion carries. Next is the approval of contract with Summers Taylor to resurface the path around Wildwood Park in the amount of forty-six thousand twenty-five dollars.
Uh, this is a project to repair deteriorating asphalt walk path at Wildwood. Uh, the project was included in your approved budget, but the cost estimate was significantly lower than the actual contract amount. We will need to identify some additional savings in the parks and rent budget, as well as supplement from the strip repair budget that is a needed repair regret.
Is there motion to accept this recommendation? So the motion, Pedego. Do we have a second? Need a second. Got a second. Any questions or comments?
Uh, maybe this is one I think that the question was raised about. I believe it's L on page fifty-nine in our packet. Tony, did you address that?
Yes, if you you look at that clause, it's referring to pre-existing conditions that were on site prior to the upcoming uh court for confirms in city attorney and their legal opinion that that it is not talked about, they're working on things identified that are pre-existing conditions before they start.
Any other question?
Does the city attorney have anything she wants to add?
Uh, I mean, I I agree with Tony, but we can always discuss. I don't think we've ever had an issue with Summers Taylor. This looks like the general terms and conditions that they would handle anyone, so uh we can always go back to them and just clarify a couple of things, but I don't I don't think there's an issue right now.
Are we ready to vote? Let's vote. And that motion carries. Next is the approval of contract with Cook's Mechanical Services in the amount of seventeen thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars for the replacement of heat and air conditioning unit at the Parks and Recreation Administration building.
Uh, this unit is needed for repair. Uh, this unit is in need of repair at the Parks and Recreation. Uh, as with last time, we had an amount in the budget to cover this cost. However, the amount quoted was only eight thousand dollars. So, once again, we'll need to return to the Parks and Rec budget and identify savings to cover the, uh, the needed amount to make up the difference, we think that's possible, we recommend approval.
Is there a motion to accept this recommendation? We have a second. Need a second, got a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, let's vote. And that motion carries. Uh, we have some, uh, motions, got it, the firework, uh, chief, let's.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm requesting council's motion, uh, appointing the fourth position, excuse me, first being training officer.
What's your recommendation?
Keith Rouse.
Keith Rouse is recommended, is there a motion to accept that recommendation? Motion Bibbins, you have a second. Any questions over the chief? Hearing none, let's vote. And that recommendation is through.
Uh, that leaves a vacancy at Luke Kent. I'd like to appoint Keith Rouse, I'm sorry, Eric Morgan.
Eric Morgan is nominated, is there a motion to accept that nomination?
Thank you, sir.
Motion center. And we have a second, any questions with the chief on Eric Morgan? Hearing none, let's vote.
And that leaves an opening at the driver, there was an existing opening at driver. I'd like to appoint two drivers now, fill them together, or. Uh, Zachary Kilby and Sean West.
Sean West and Jackie Kilby have been, uh.
Zachary, Zachary Kilby.
Is there a motion to accept the recommendation? So, the motion, Pedego. We have a second, any questions or comments at the chief? Hearing none, let's vote. Those two were.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. We have the city administrators for both.
Uh, clearly spring is upon us, weather is changing, things are looking up. Our last two, Parks and Rec departments handle heat related items, there are about eight hundred trucks. Despite of the fact that we have threatened the weather all morning up into the afternoon, so I think that was a good event. Several things going on around town, the farming market issues that have been on course like this early in the season. Most of the things that are available in the market are, are three pound corn items and, and related things, vegetables. But, uh, we're very excited to have the farming market back in operation. I started looking at our schedule, in the next three weeks, we've got a lot going on here. We've got, uh, continuation softball tournaments at Moreno, we're bringing in teams from out of town to, to utilize our facilities to visit our community. There's a mountain bike race at Andrews Creek Park. There's a Renaissance there, the weekend at Rose Center. We've got a first of a series of disc golf tournaments in our community. The, uh, concert series on the downtown Green, where we began in person May. We've got the Skymark Art Festival downtown that will be scheduled for the weekend, we have the next concert. And East Thai Van is scheduled to do a spring concert at Fulton Hills Park. So, in the next three weeks, you've got a lot of opportunity to get out and enjoy, enjoy our community. That will allow you to see some of the facilities around town and enjoy being in more towns, we look forward to that. Uh, one final housing item, council will sit as the beer board meets with following this meeting. Uh, we've got a number of things on that agenda, so in light of the length of this agenda and that agenda, there is no workshop scheduled following that, so that's my report for that.
We kind of drew a portion at the end of our agenda, uh, for open and forward communications. Uh, that does not address agenda items, this, this portion of our meeting was added to the agenda a few years back and remains, uh, on our, uh, the, remains on our sheets and agenda, uh, to this day. Uh, we will open the floor at this time for any comments about topics you believe may need to be, uh, brought to the attention of the council. Again, you have three minutes to, uh, express those views, uh, and please identify yourself by name and address, the floor is now open.
I would want to know, Mr. Stevens Road, I would like to ask that you televise your meetings, tape and televise them. And in particular, I'd like to address the comment that the mayor just made and has made at the last two or three meetings. And that is that this was, this comment period was added probably about twelve years ago for general comments for the public, the citizens, the voters. You rarely have any comments, and yet you are wanting to end this period. Mr. Pedego mentioned it during the pre-meeting, that nobody attends and you don't tape. Mr. Pedego mentioned it up when you were in Kingsport, again at a meeting that very few people could attend. Fortunately, one or two people were able to get up there and video it. Why can't you stand to listen to the public, three minutes? But if you go back, you'll find very few times has anybody gotten up and spoken during this period. If they have, it's because they have something they want to say and they want to say it to everybody. Let the people speak. Three minutes, and I only took one and a half. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Moon Chai, I'm the first officer off the street, Morristown. Every time I, I come here, and I always say that I'm making a fool out of myself, and that's the truth. And I hope that I can keep this negative privilege to myself, rather than one day reflected to the city as a whole. I'm just concentrated to my original purpose of coming here. It doesn't seem to be trying to tear me down, two buildings out of the three buildings on the property that I own. Not going back to the original, why my building gets your attention, but let's just focus on the most recent incident. They, you guys had demolition contractor to do the work on the fourth of the April. And I told you guys, stop, because I knew that, that is something not right. That is discrimen, there's differences between the report and the actual work they did. And I suspect there was asbestos. No one listened to me, they stopped on Monday, Tuesday they go forward. And they created a hazardous situation for everyone to inhale. Then, now, there's one remaining building there, supposed to be all those asbestos being removed. But now, the report just came out yesterday, all three units, every one of them is containing asbestos. I just use this as an example, but as a reverse engineer, from the actual demolition work to the awarding to the contract, to the very beginning how you guys, that my building gets your attention, that is step by step full of mistake. If you don't do something and don't open the communication wider, deeper, rather than just three minutes, and provide more open communication, two direction, you guys are going to get yourself into more and more trouble. I promise you, you guys already created some very complicated situation by accusing me, posting threat to you guys, just because you guys do not open the communication. Us, you guys ask for information, I provided, I did not hear back, then I have to actively search for what's going on. Then you guys accusing me, but create a threatening and create a hostile situation that I cannot. I even, for a few weeks, I avoid eye contact to the council members, because I do not know how you guys perceive me. But now, quick, asbestos award of the contract is false. And then to get attention to the building is false, but let's.
Your time has expired.
Let's, thank you, but let me just, if you can spare me a few seconds to conclude. About asbestos, we need to get it done.
Your time has expired, and we're not serving any new ground here, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak for the council? So, you know, we have more than four of this portion of the, uh, and over the four great comments from mayor or council members about any items.
Mayor, I'd like to point out that everyone has an invitation that they're seeing, it is from the Friends of Hospice. They're inviting the city council, our state representative, our senator, and our, uh, D C representative to come to the hospice serenity house, and that would be on May the twelfth at four thirty for an opportunity to see what the services are that they provide there. I believe that Al Avery is on that board, and Bob works closely with them. We have been funding them, and I think this is a, a really nice opportunity. I, I believe also Danny Houseright has been invited to attend this. Uh, and that's, that's because of another issue that's happening in our town that has to do with our public safety and transportation of individuals. We talked about that earlier today, the hospital board meeting, and we have talked about that in nine one one. And the need for transportation of individuals who need to go to Serenity House, the hospital, and other places. But I think Stephanie Hamel does a great job, and it would be beneficial for us to have this information firsthand and see what they do. The other thing we talked about earlier, when we were talking about the zoning program, and I brought it up, that we had an opportunity to be with some individuals from the county and also the school board. I would like to, as I mentioned earlier in our pre-agenda meeting, to have an opportunity for us to sit down and look at, as Mr. Pedego pointed out earlier, we are growing. I'd like for us to take that map that Steve put together for us that we had when we had our retreat in Kingsport and add to that, so that we have the big picture of what's happening and what we are, because it's going to impact the schools. Four hundred fifty units there at Millstone is going to greatly impact the Alpha, uh, area and eventually Westview and other things like that. So, I believe, you told me Mr. Perry had come in, superintendent had come in and gotten the map and provided it. So, I think, and at one time, I believe we did meet with the chamber president and representatives from the others. So, I just think it would be vigilant, it would be educational, and it would be aggressive to worry about what's happening in the big picture. But I'd like to see us do that soon.
Yeah, I'd like to add to, uh, Serenity House, uh, it's always, they are always looking for volunteers. If you have a heart for, uh, folks that are suffering end-of-life, uh, diseases, uh, please call them and become a volunteer. For those of you that don't know what Serenity House is, they provide, um, end-of-life care for people who don't have caregivers. So, it's a, it's a wonderful organization, uh, they're doing great service for them, they need our support. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments on any? Hearing none, we'll remind the council that we're going to convene about as quickly as we can to get the board changed as the beer board. If there are no other items, come forward, council, and entertain a motion to the council.
So, move.